Meeting of the Delta County Commissioners is being held this date pursuant to the following call. In a letter to the Commissioners stated April 10th, 2025, and reading as follows, "The Honorable Members of the Delta County Board of Commissioners, dear Commissioners, a statutory meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is scheduled for Tuesday, April 15th, 2025, at 5:15 PM in the conference room at the Delta County Service Center. Sincerely yours, Nancy Posraki, Delta County Clerk." Please rise for a word of prayer. Lord, as we begin this meeting, we thank you for our many blessings. We ask for guidance to help our Commissioners make decisions in the best interests of the citizens of our county, and, Lord, we pray for the safety of our military men and women and our first responders. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner Melner?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Vanckenhoven?
Here.
And Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Okay, welcome all to statutory meeting. Start off by approval of the minutes from the previous meeting from 4-1, 2025.
So moved?
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. We need approval of the agenda with one addition.
Mr. Chair, if I may also add a couple more. I'd like to add the airport manager position on here for discussion.
New, under new business?
Under new business.
Number?
Uh, the next one?
Nine.
Nine.
Airport manager?
Yep.
Okay.
And then could we also, for discussion number 10, add additions to the agenda, like when our final agenda is set? So just be additions to the agenda.
Okay. And then I'm going to ask that we remove number seven, Delta Conservation District Request for Kayaks. That's going to plan, I'm sorry, Parks and Recreation Commission. I don't know if I can do that. Can I do that? Can you do that?
Oh, yeah, I'll add that in my motion.
Okay.
And while we're at it, we'll do the change of 30-day notice of appointments, Parks and Recreation Commission to Parks and Recreation Commission, District 3.
Any more, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Okay. Do we have an agenda to work with? We go down to presentation of written communications received and forwarded. There was none. Reports of standing statutory-
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I ask a quick question on that? On the communications?
Okay.
Did we receive notification from Attorney Burkhart about his retirement?
No.
Not yet?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. It's just a lot of other groups have, so I wasn't sure if we had gotten a letter yet. Okay.
They're usually, all your presentation of written communications and then the reports of standing statutory special committees and others are done at the first meeting of every month.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Reports of standing statutory special meetings and others. Public comment on agenda items. Public comment on agenda items. Last and final call.
And there's no, no remote public comment either.
Public comment on agenda items, seeing none. We will move on to committee reports. Administrator report.
The UP State Fair Authority requested for MDNR Trust Fund to allow for a grant extension. Previously, I said they had canceled the grant. Ultimately, the Trust Fund had granted them the extension, so the UP State Fair Project receives originally planned with the continued assistance from Dynamic Design. Update for the Delta County Airport. I've passed the manager's examination with the state of Michigan. Therefore, the county has a licensed manager at the airport. I've been working with FAA inspector regarding the water rescue plan and have sent a first draft over to him to review. Also, the inspection is being tentatively scheduled for the first week of June. The MIDC grant application is being worked upon with me and Attorney Mackey. We're going to be submitting that for April 25th due date. The auditors have begun our fiscal year 24 single in financial audits along with the PFC audit. Personnel Committee updates. We are still reviewing the policies within the county. Commissioner Williams has taken the initiative. Thank you for categorizing each of these policies based on different categories within the county, if it's personnel-related, financial-related, et cetera. So this will help the Personnel Committee review them. Also, she has sent forward the job description, as she's the liaison for the Billings and Zoning Department, and added, asked for some changes done. So that will be sent over to the Personnel Committee. Also, we'll be looking at the controller position, job description, along with the administrator's job description according to the Committee of the Whole, and we have not scheduled the next Personnel Meeting. For the Finance Committee, it was requested to review the ARPA funds that we had received and where we're at there, also to discuss the financial effects of the Earn Sick Time Act, along with other items that we're reviewing as the maintenance position for the Service Center and the county's leave policy will be brought back. We have not scheduled a time for that committee also.
Okay.
Along with that, we have the Veterans Affairs. I just want to bring an update on where we're at with that. We're bringing those back via applications for the committee back to the Commission in the first month of May, or, I'm sorry, the first meeting in May.
Motion to place Administrator's report on file.
I'll support.
Did someone else say something?
Any discussion?
I, I just have a question. For the airport, you said you've been working with the FAA inspector regarding the water rescue plan. Are you asking for help with Paul, from Paul Guyer with that as well?
Yes.
Sweet. Thanks.
Yes.
Any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Department head updates. I don't see no, Nancy, you're only-
Not today.
Not today, okay. Unfinished business, utility easement for Obie Fuller Park. Up call.
We've received the updated maps, however, we have not seen the definition of what they consider emergencies.
And they also need to change Ford River to Bark River.
Okay.
Yep.
There's, it's, there's a, two things in there, small, small changes.
So we're still waiting for those?
Yeah.
Okay. To new business, payment of bills.
I've examined all claims presented and recommend payment of the following. At the county clerk, be directed to issue orders on the county treasurer to the claimants for the amounts allowed. Grand total of bills, $1,040,981.08. Commissioner expense, $502.80.
Move pay bills?
I'll support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Okay.
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vanckenhoven?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
And Melner?
Yes.
Number two, letter of support for Bright Speed Broadband Access.
This is a similar letter of support for the BEAD grant that we have approved previously, and they're just looking for approval and signature.
So moved?
Support.
Any discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number three, retirement of A. Kelly requesting lump sum payout and to fill custodial one position.
We're looking for approval to pay on the retirement of A. Kelly and also to fill the custodial one position. This is a position that is changing from housekeeping to custodial one according to the union contract. Along with this, it has been requested that the maintenance department be allowed to fill this position as soon as possible before their, it's vacant. This individual is taking some time off, so they just want to fill the void.
Oh, so they don't have to overlap. It's just to fill time during, when they're taking vacation there. Okay.
I would move that we accept the retirement of A. Kelly, disperse the lump sum payout, and to refill the position as a custodial one, and to send a letter to them for their many years of service to the county.
Support.
All in favor?
Can I just say something?
Oh?
I'd just like to thank Ann Kelly for her many years of service to the county, and she will be greatly missed in the maintenance department, and she always kept our buildings looking really, really nice.
Yeah.
She did an excellent job.
Yep.
Yeah.
But I'd say aye, too.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose?
Posraki, can I ask a question? Chairman?
Yes.
Um, did they, did you approve in your motion to allow them to fill the position prior to her resignation date?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Do you want to?
You want, you wanted amended?
If you are willing to approve something like that.
We could just make another motion.
We can just make another motion, yeah.
I'll make that motion that we cover the vacation time with the new hire.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Now, let's see. Number four, appointment to opioid task force. If there's one opening.
We had recently appointed Greg Tuton as the newest member of our opioid task force at a recent meeting, and his term expired immediately after he, we appointed him. So it's basically just reappointing him.
And then there was one other applicant, too.
There was one other applicant as well, but we had just, like-
Justed it.
We had just done it and, or did it, and then, like, a few weeks later, his term expired because he was filling Judge Parks's vacancy.
Okay.
So.
So your motion would be?
Hence my confusion. I was like, why are we doing this again?
Yes, yes. So my motion would be to reappoint Greg Tuton to the opioid task force.
I'll support.
Favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed.
We had just gotten his acceptance paperwork back, and then Tracy's like, we got it in, but then it expired.
Okay, number five, appointments to jury commission, one opening and one alternate. So we have-
Two applicants.
Two people.
Isn't there a letter from, is there a letter from, yeah, from Economopolis in here suggesting?
There is.
He makes the recommendation.
Okay. For some reason, I'm not seeing that, but that's okay.
I didn't see it either.
Page two of B4-5 of new business.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, there we go.
Okay.
So what's-
So he recommends the two applicants that are noted on the first.
So I would make a motion to appoint Patricia, is it, how do I say?
Lang Tang.
Lang Tang, that's what I thought. Okay. So make a motion to appoint Patricia Lang Tang as a member of Delta County's Jury Board and recommend the, or appoint, the second person is Janine Burton as an alternate.
Support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Okay, number six, opioid task force, recommendation of grant funds.
In the previous meeting with the opioid task force, they have brought forward to you on page 12, the recommendations for funding specific programs. And then they also gave the reasons for denials, and they're requesting approval for these recommendations.
So I think it's important to point out that the opioid task force is an advisory board, and so they, they reviewed and ran all of the applications through a rubric to determine whether or not they met the qualifications, and then, and then looked at, uh, each individual member decided on, you know, this, these, these applicants meet the conditions, and then if they didn't, they, or they had excess material in their application, the commission members made point of that, but that this board would be making the final decision. And I think that we came, there's enough money to cover the five. Is that correct? The five that-
Yeah, the opioid task force had set a limit of up to $100,000 per fiscal year for dispersment of funds, so we can have longevity of these funds over the 18-year period. And so in, being able to do that, we received, I believe, 15 applications, and we chose these five to not exceed the $100,000. And all of the applications were put into a zip file because we're an advisory board, we can't make that decision. The board has to make the decision, so we wanted to ensure that everybody could see all of the applications that were presented, because the Board of Commissioners has the ultimate decision-making power on this.
Correct.
And if you have any questions about the applications, Commissioner Williams and I did thoroughly review all of them.
I would also point out there was general consistency among the task force members on the applicants and how they sort of came out of the rubric. So the rubric, rubric worked very well because it was very consistent, and, and there were, there were very few discrepancies among each of the members.
And also, we found out that we had a very open and ethical board because we all sit on different, you know, like, people who were applying to these things. Like, we had one member that sat on Fan Board. We had another person who sat on Great Lakes Recovery. We had another person who sat on Catholic Social Services. So we all sat there for a little bit going, okay, how are we going to do this?
Yeah.
But it was a very productive and constructive meeting, and we felt that these were the, the best five. And then, of course, because we're in such a short timeframe as far as dispersment of these funds, and then the next round of applicants, we highly suggest that the people, or, excuse me, the organizations that did not receive funds reapply and then use these reasons for denial to be able to submit better applications in the future. So what the opioid task force was hoping, that when these funds are dispersed to the recipients, whoever, whomever we choose, that also the other organizations receive a letter saying, we did not decide to do funds this time, but would like you to reapply, and here are the things that you would consider.
You guys would do that?
No, we would ask that. The administration did that, yeah.
Yeah, it's a little confusing this year because of the timing. It's really strange because the recipients will get the money and then have to spend it by October, which is really kind of weird. It's a very short timeframe. But then you would reapply in, you know, November, when the application goes out again, and then that would be for the full year, you know. So it's just a weird timing for this particular year.
So if they don't spend all of it?
They have to spend all of it.
They have to spend it.
By September 30th.
Yeah. They have to spend it within, within the fiscal year.
And they are aware of that.
Or it comes back to the opioid task force.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's just a little funny this year.
Yeah, and that was specifically stated in the application.
Then I move that we accept the opioid task force recommendation for the fund dispersments for fiscal year 25 with Face the Addiction Now, Escalable Public Safety, Delta Regional Child Advocacy Center, 94th District Court, Great Lakes Recovery Center, for a grand total of $92,492. And then a letter be sent to the other applicants that weren't chosen, asking them, or encouraging them to reapply in the future.
Good support?
Support.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Okay, number one has been canceled. Number eight, FOIA appeal, number 25-06, status update.
Commissioner Vanckenhoven had requested this to be on here. Do you want me just to state my-
Yeah.
So I responded to the individual that had requested the status update, and I had reached out to Graham back in February. I have not received any response. I followed up again recently, and I haven't heard anything from him. Plus, I heard, I believe, I'm sorry, it was the February one, he did respond and state that he received my email and he'd be working on it. I followed up, and I haven't heard a response from him.
Do you have a date on when you followed up with him, Ashley?
Um, I believe it was the 10th.
Okay, of this month, right?
Of this.
Yeah, okay. So my question is, like, how long do we allow this to go on before, or a timeframe that he has to respond, or no?
No, technically, there's not, but it's not good that it's taking this long. And so has, have you, have you talked with prosecuting attorney Wickman about writing a letter to him?
No, I have not.
It might be the next step is just to write a letter, you know, from our primary legal counsel.
With the goal to compel? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, just, just, you know, reiterating that these are important documents that we should be in possession of and to disclose these documents so that we, we have them for our file. So maybe that would be the next logical step.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to put this on file? Or is it just discussion?
It's just discussion.
Oh, just discuss. I don't think there's anything to put on file.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks for that update.
Okay, we will move on to number nine, airport manager.
Yeah, I asked this to be on the agenda. We've had some new interest in the airport manager position, and I was wondering how we wanted to proceed with that. If we wanted to do, like, a public interview, if we wanted to do the interview process that we've been going through. Do we need to reopen the position to get to it? How do you guys want to proceed?
The position hasn't closed, so it's still open. I would think we would follow the same procedure that we had, the same application, run it through the same rubric, find out where that falls within the scope of the other candidates.
Okay.
I would agree. Yeah, I would just follow the same process.
And there's a meeting for that group tomorrow morning.
Okay. And then do we have an interview scheduled then, or you're gonna do that tomorrow?
No, the, the hiring, what the hiring committee does is they will go through the applications that we've received, and then we will either toss them out, you know, saying this is not worth our, you know, our effort. And then, once the candidates are selected that we do want to move forward with, then we'll schedule interviews. Then we have to follow up with second interviews. Then we have to make an offer. Then we have to go into, you know, working agreements on amount and, and start date and things of that nature. My question would be, considering that one of the applicants is already a employee of the county, why do we have to go through the entire process?
I wouldn't necessarily think we'd have to do the whole process. I mean, it's, my understanding there were additional applicants, so there are-
Did you look at them?
I have not seen those yet either.
Why not?
Because-
They were sent to us.
I haven't seen them yet.
I think that it's important that even if we have a person who is currently working within the county, we still want to evaluate, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't even see you walking up there. I, I'm looking down. I, I would still want to evaluate their qualifications and their, you know, their experience and so forth. And so I feel like it would still be important that we go through the same process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would agree. I feel this, I feel the interview process, especially when it's somebody we know and they're homegrown, it kind of flushes out what our expectations are, what their expectations of us are, any weaknesses they might have that we can help support, and any weaknesses we have that we need support for that they may point out. I mean, the interview's not just a, a one-way, it's just me. It's, it's very much a back and forth. And I, I like to, I like to date somebody before I marry them.
Okay. So my question is, because the applicant has already been involved in the first round of application process, doesn't that bias the whole, the entire?
No, not as long as, not as long as you redo some fundamental pieces, which would be like the interview questions. Other than that, their knowledge of the process, anyone would, anyone can have knowledge of the process. I mean, that's an open, we, we, the process would be public information, but the interview questions would need to be changed, because if that person has information about them, they would then have a bias. Or they would have, not a, not a bias, I take that word back, they would have an upper hand, which you wouldn't want, so.
Brian?
Yeah, so I did read through the new resumes. Like Matt said, we're meeting tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock to go through them. Three of the members of the hiring committee are in this room. One more is going to be joining us tomorrow. The fifth one that is not going to be able to tomorrow morning, she's booked up. There are, there is one that might be worth a look, but we'll, tomorrow, we will go through the resumes we have, make a decision on, you know, like Kelly said, we're probably going to throw some out, call some in for interviews. And, you know, my plan was to proceed with the process as planned until you guys change it.
Okay.
Now, after your meeting, is it going to be, should we have a special meeting after that to get things moving?
We can't say because we have to go through the, if we're going to follow the way we did it the first round, it would be the hiring committee meets, picks through the resumes on who we would interview. We would have to do first interviews, second interviews, then dependent on who we picked, we would have to offer them the position. They would have time to respond, negotiate the starting wage, starting date. So we're looking at least a couple weeks out, right?
Well, I'd say, because the hiring committee is going to interview, and we're going to make a recommendation to you guys.
We're going to make a recommendation after we do the interview process.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, yeah.
Right. But, you know, after that, you know, it's up to you guys.
Mr. Chair?
And that'll, that would put the next board meeting about three weeks out from today. So that'd give you plenty of time then.
Mr. Chair, that, we don't necessarily need to have a first interview and a second interview on, like, weeks apart. We could do a first interview, be like, oh, that person's amazing.
If they're available.
Second interview. Like, I mean, within two hours, three hours. We don't need that much time.
We were scheduled also for Monday morning.
Yeah, there were some other topics that we, that the advisory board need to address on Monday morning, and is why we're meeting Monday morning. So that, that is a good point, that we may be able to truncate it a little bit and get it done.
And then-
Advisory boards making a recommendation on Monday.
At that time, because we have, our two airport board commissioners are also here, they could request a special meeting, because we need two people to request a special meeting. That could be taken care of almost, I mean, we could have it done within three days.
We gotta-
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, but, but, yeah.
Okay, so-
I see where you're going.
I, I just want to, I just want to say this, that we've had this job posted since January. We've gone through the process. It's been- We've gone through the process, it's been four months now. We have a perfectly qualified candidate who checks all the boxes, who is in-house. So, I'm wondering why we have to elongate this process when it is within the Board of Commissioners purview to hire this person to transfer into the, you know what I mean? Like, why are we reinventing the wheel here?
I guess, my point on that, Kelly, is I think we should take the time, as a group, look through resumes tomorrow. If, if the three of us and Dennis look at the resumes and say, here's our answer, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
But I think we need to open resumes.
Well, and going back to what Patrick Johnson said earlier, which is, I think, important, it's, it's a back and forth, you know? So, it's not just the advisory board and us saying, yeah, we want to give this person this job. It's this person deciding for sure that this is the job they want, right? And that happens during this process.
Yep.
It happens during an interview process. And so, I just think it's important that, that everybody who's interested in the position goes through that process, so that they have the opportunity to ask questions, to, for the, the committee to understand fully everyone's, you know, experience and qualifications. Because sometimes, you know, people can say, hey, I'm totally qualified. And then, you ask questions and it's like...
And no, you're not.
No, you're not, you know? So, it, I think it's just important that we, that we follow the process. Yeah.
But I, like I said, we'll meet tomorrow morning and we'll schedule an interview from there.
Sounds good.
And go see where that takes us.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm satisfied.
Okay.
Thank you.
Number 10, addition to agenda?
Yeah, I, I asked for this also, just for discussion. I, I noticed Friday, it seems like we're crunching hard to get the agenda out. And if we want to add something like Friday afternoon, even Monday morning, we really can't until we add it at this meeting. Would it be possible that people, or the community has the expectation, rather that they get it, I mean, they might get like every, like whatever little thing we might have, but that it finalizes on Monday, just to give us that extra day? It seems like we short ourselves by going Friday. Is that too much of an administrative burden? And if you guys want to keep it Friday, that's fine, I can be sweet either way, but it just, it seems like we're, like, there's always a couple times where it's like, oh, shoot, I wish we could've just got this on.
You know, I, just a quick comment. I hate that it goes out on a Friday, because I'm always like, at the end of the week, I'm finally figuring out, like, oh, this needs to get done or that, you know? And I would love to have Friday to sort of finalize what I'm finding I need to discuss. And then, the agenda would be out Monday morning or something like that. But, yeah, I've run into this many times.
So, the deadline is currently Wednesday?
Mm, I know.
But, could we push it to...
So, now, you want to push it to Monday?
Well, yeah, because...
And then, we would get the information when?
On Monday. Well, we would have, like, the information would be gathering in the cloud for us. But the public would know that on Monday, this is it.
Oh, gotcha. So, it's just for online and for posting purposes?
Right, right, as far as community goes. As far as we go, I mean, the agenda, or everything populates like as they get it.
As it is, yeah, right.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying like all of a sudden, we get like just blitzed with things.
Okay. I see. So, you just mean for putting the agenda out to the public?
Right, right. So, that their expectation is if they see something like, well, I didn't see that yesterday, why is that there?
Well, and I, I feel like we're getting to the point where we're having to add stuff. And typically, the stuff that we have to end up adding, it happens like on Friday, you know? So, maybe we could be better at making sure that our agenda is finalized by giving us that, that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, you know?
Just to make sure I'm understanding, we keep the Wednesday at noon deadline for all the files to be submitted into administration to be added to the agenda. However, it would not be posted on our website until Monday at four.
Correct, okay.
Or by Friday.
And I would, I would...
But, do you want to keep the deadline to Wednesday?
I would be, I would be okay with the deadline even being Friday to get all this stuff in. But, how does, that sounds more administratively burdensome.
Right, it just shortens out the date. Usually, if we're missing anything, we review on Wednesday and then by Friday, we have it all compiled to disperse.
Okay.
So, it usually takes to, yeah, so it's Friday and that's why we send it out to the public.
Okay.
Can we, can we make it, would you guys be okay with making it Friday instead of Wednesday?
Noon on Friday?
Well, then, there's no business days for us to coordinate the agenda packet, 'cause it's the weekend.
Oh, you'd only have Friday afternoon.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
If you want to do...
I understand.
Push it Thursday and Monday?
I mean, that, that's better. But, in keeping with Commissioner Vaganhoven's tradition of not wanting to add things and vote on, I'm okay not voting on this today, I just, discussing it was...
Yeah, it was discussion, yeah.
And I would like to talk to Tracy on her process procedures too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Prior than making a decision. Okay.
Listen, you can twist my arm sometimes.
I don't like to abuse the power too much, though.
We're all friends here.
Any more discussion on this? Okay, we will move on to general public comment.
I think the county seriously needs to try and find another applicant as a veteran service officer. Dave Dwyer was asked by the county to help you figure out what to do with setting up the veteran service office. He gave you horrible advice. He knew the law from the beginning. He knew that what was going on wasn't okay, but he went along with it anyways. And he never stood up and said, hey, or spoke out and said, this isn't right, you're supposed to be doing it this way, according to the law. And Dave knew the law right from the beginning. There's no doubt in my mind about that at all. So, why did he let the county go through all this? Why did he take months and months and months to write the bylaws himself and to handpick the committee himself and give advice to the county when the, the committee was the one supposed to be hiring Dave and writing the bylaws? And now, Dave seems to still be pushing the bylaws that he wrote. And when he denied, or didn't look at my application appropriately, or whatever, if it got lost, or didn't get to the county, he made that decision on interactions that I had with him at the veteran service office. That's protected information. That's private, violation of my privacy. And it's a violation of laws that VSOs have to follow. And his accreditation, I believe, could be in danger. And you may be hiring somebody that may not be able to continue to perform the duties because he may not have a license to do so. I would really like to hear from Dave as to why he led the county astray, continued down that path without standing up and saying, hey, this is wrong. And the county, you have acknowledged that you, you know, and apologized and everything, and you've done what's right. But yet, Dave has yet to stand up and say, I did something wrong. And the only reason for him to do that, that I can see, is for his own benefit, so that he was guaranteed to get hired back in. And he had all the power to write the bylaws, which is the committee's job, which hasn't even been selected yet. So, it's his job to follow the laws, grants, federal law, state law, and all of that, and to guide us. And he's supposed to have our back as veterans. He was okay with the notices not going out properly. He was okay with all of this. And he was just gonna do it all himself. It was the Dave Show. And that's not okay. And I want Dave to say his piece, you know? Why? Why, Dave? Why did you do this? And it's not up to the county to hire him anymore, it's up to the committee. But the committee needs to take this very seriously. And if we do hire Dave, will he be around in the future if I file a complaint against him as a VSO? And for what he's done? Because he did violate the law, in my belief at least. But, that's yet to be determined. I would still like to hear what Dave has to say before I file a complaint and give him a chance to speak. But yet, you know, so far, he hasn't said anything, so. I really want to know what, what he was thinking and why he let it go this far, and why I'm the one that had to speak out and say that this was wrong, and why he wasted all of our time in the beginning, knowing darn well how it was supposed to go. Thanks.
Any other general public comment? Any other general public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to commissioner comments. Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, just, like, just more of a question. How are the parks going with setup and grass clippings and all the maintenance that we need to get that thing open as fast as we possibly can? I was just curious if where we're at on hiring and moving as far and as fast as we can, so we can have a successful summer. That was all.
You don't want me to answer?
No, you don't have to answer, that's just a comment.
Because I have a comment.
Oh, perfect.
I can answer, thank you. Okay. So, I spoke earlier today with the vice chair of the park commission. And applications for the parks manager position will be sent over to the parks commission. They're gonna discuss it, which way they want to pursue the parks commission is. It's gonna be on the next month's agenda. Also, the seasonals are hired by the parks manager. So, we're going through that process. He has been reviewing those applications and I think we have a couple, well, some are returning from prior, our prior season. And then, as long, for the cleanup. So, as we've discussed with our maintenance department, our county's maintenance department, we kind of utilize the parks technician number two to come over and help us. Well, now, it's our turn to return the favor. And we've sent several individuals over there to help with the cleanup in part, so.
Nice, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Williams?
I, yeah, I have a couple of things. So, the parks commission has finalized the initial survey for the five-year rec plan. That's now out for the public. This is an initial survey, so it's very general, and it's trying to engage the public so that we can then, from that initial survey, create additional public engagement, in-person sessions and potentially additional surveys. So, the survey's on the county's website. It's also going to be on several townships' websites. And John, if you want to talk to any of your townships and ask them if they want to share it on their, their township web presence, I'll send you the information and you can do that. But, right now, it's out, it'll be on the Ford River website, Ford River Township website. It's Escanaba Township and, and then the county's website right now. And we also have a bunch of these little cards here. It's just basically a QR code. And the QR code, when you zap it with your phone, it'll take you to the link so that you can take the survey online. These are going to be all over, like in the supermarkets and libraries and so forth. And then, we also have some little frames that are gonna be in like doctors' offices and dentist's offices and whoever will let us put them there. Wherever you're gonna be sitting and doing nothing for a short period of time, these will be in there so that you can click them and take the survey. And then, also, if people are interested in taking the survey via paper, they don't want to take it online, there are a number of places in which the paper copies will be located. So, right now, I think Chamber of Commerce, that little table inside their entryway, the Escanaba, or, I'm sorry, Bedenock Schools, High School, Rapid River High School, I meant to have this up and ready to read and I, I forgot about it. So, here, here we go. Ford River Township Hall, Escanaba Township Hall, Bark River Township Hall, City of Gladstone City Hall, Rapid River High School Main Office, Big Bedenock High School Main Office, the Bay College Library, and Boba Loons. So, that's where the paper copies will be, if you want to pick them up. Otherwise, you can always go on the parks page on the county website. And we'll have a link there that you can actually download and print it yourself if you wanted to do that. But those locations will also serve as the drop-off for those paper, paper copies. Or you're welcome to mail them. There's a, an address on there where you can mail them if you're interested in that. So, that'll be out for 30 days and we'll be getting hopefully lots of public input for that first initial phase. And then, second, I'm looking at an, an app called GoGov. It's a mobile app for municipalities. And I just got this information from one of the board members at Escanaba Township Board Meeting last night, so I started looking at it today. I'll actually forward on the information that I get to the IT committee and we'll, we'll go from there and look at it. But it's basically a customer relationship management tool that's specifically built for municipalities. So, it has like code enforcement, citizen notifications, online permitting and licensing. So, it's a really cool tool that people can use to engage with their county in a sort of more modern way. And it allows for things like, you know, building and zoning to have all of their, their information in, in a more concise, it's not PDF forms that you're filling out, it's, it's actually a form online that you're filling out and it directly, you know, can collect fees and so forth. So, it's just kind of a, an interesting tool that was shared with me last night and I looked at it today and I was really pretty, pretty impressed with it. And so, I made a, I set up a demo to see what it, what it can do. And of course, Escanaba Township was very interested if the county would be interested, because then they wouldn't, you know, they were like, well, maybe the county will want to do this and then we could just piggyback onto it. So, who knows? Anyways, just information and just want to let you know that I'm kind of excited about something like that, so, that's it.
Commissioner Kelly?
I'm gonna pass.
You're gonna pass. Big one for us here was the, the MAC conference that we just attended. It's always neat, 'cause there's, I've yet to find a time in there where there isn't something new for us to be able to bring back. So, some of those items will be coming out here in the future for us. I think, again, there's some really good ideas that are out there that we can, whether they pan out for us, whether they turn out to be viable, it's, if nothing else, it's a different way of looking at some things. So, that was one of them. The, piggyback off on the parking rec, there was also sharing the link, helps with Pointwise too. So, for those who need to get the link, please feel free to share that out there. And then, they asked if you'd take a screenshot of that?
Yes.
Do we have a place we want to send that?
Yeah, I apologize, I'm not a social media user, so I forget to mention that. But, obviously, social media is very important for getting information out. But, yeah, if, if people are sharing, the DNR, who is, we submit this five-year rec plan too, we actually get additional credit when we have shares. So, the more sharing that we do, the more public engagement that we do, the more points we get. So, that gives us additional benefit in the future when we apply for grants. So, yeah, if you've got, if you're gonna share it, if you take a quick screenshot and send it to one of us, we'll figure out how to get it into our, into our system so that it gets counted. That would be great.
That was the big one. The other one, which Administrator Young already hit on, was the, the change in status for the trust fund grant for the fairgrounds, so...
Which is great.
Yes, that'd be nice to see that actually be able to go forward. I can tell you based on the other timeline, it won't be done in time for the fair. But they have a look at shortly thereafter, so. If that timeline changes, I will be sure to pass that along.
So, the survey is also on the non-motorized trail Facebook page. So, so it's out there and I certainly will share it on my website, so.
Okay, perfect. And Nancy, do you know, can you verify, please look at it and verify that it says May 16th for the date that it's done? Because that got updated kind of at the last minute. It, the date, we had a 30-day window, but the date didn't get updated until not too long ago. So, if you need a new one, I'll make sure you get it.
Sure, thank you. And then, I'd like to have the hard copies available in the clerk's office too.
Oh, perfect, okay.
We get a lot of traffic.
Anything else, Nancy?
No, that's it.
Administrator Young?
Just one thing that I'd like to bring up was earlier, when it was stated that the months and months delay for the veterans, that was just between the Veterans Affairs and the Administration Office, we're just very busy and between our two schedules and they just were not meshing. So, I just want to share that over under my office too. So, and then, we also, I mean, we asked him, because the veteran, our current veteran service officer, he's our expertise when it comes to our veteran county veterans affairs. And we did ask for him to give his input and recommendations, and that was brought on all committees, all the, the board meeting here, he had presented it, so I just want to acknowledge that. Thank you. Thank you.
When are we gonna get the applications to review for the veterans?
First meeting in May.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep. All of them.
I just got it.
Myself, I was down at the MAC meeting also, or the conference, and I also had a MAC meeting at that time. The legislative person that handles all the, for the legislative, there was nine bills that were dropped in December on Lane Dock. They are going to be reviewing these and going forward. The, all we heard for many years is fix the roads. The House has passed a bill, and it went to the Senate with some recommendations on it, and if this bill passes, there'll be a lot of money per county to fix roads. They're looking at $2.1 billion for just the counties, out of a $3.2 billion package. So, as long as the, the House, House already voted for it, the Senate's gotta vote for it, and then get signed by the governor. So, that goes through, you're gonna see some nice roads, 'cause every county will end up with some good money. And that's all I got. 30-day notices of appointment, Parks and Rec Commission, two Parks and Rec Commission, District Three.
It's specific for District Three?
Yes, just District Three, so. Go to, I think Nancy's clerk's office to get that stuff?
The applications are available, yes, there and, and online.
Yep.
On the website.
So, you can either go to the clerk's office or look online. Uh, need a motion to adjourn?
You can do the meeting schedule?
Oh, I missed meeting schedule. Five, six, 25, at 5:15 right here. Five, 20, 25, 5:15 right here, and six, 3, 25, right here, at 5:15. Now, meeting for adjourn.
So moved.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?